City of Fulton, July twenty-four at five-thirty. May I have roll call please, story?
Mayor Wendy.
Here.
Alder Person King.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Mast. Van Kampen.
Here.
Wilkin.
Here.
Boonstra.
Here.
Brondike.
Here.
Berger.
Here.
Very good. And this time we stand and say the vote for the Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. We're gonna be able to skip through these next few quickly. There's no recognition of volunteers. I want people to think about that though. I know that we have people out there that are deserving, so let's kind of try and get a few in at least by the end of the year, so. Then communication from visitors, we have none. Barb was going to present about the historical society here. She's not feeling well and then she was gonna leave. She's decided to take that portion and we're just gonna discuss it next month, so it won't be here at all, so. And we, Dan does have a few remarks as far as the budget on it, but other than that, we'll get to that later on. Now may I have a motion to approve the council meeting minutes as presented in your packet from July ten?
So moved.
And support?
Support.
Any questions? Otherwise, roll call please.
Alder Person Bergerath?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mast? Van Kampen?
Yes.
Boonstra?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Brondike?
Yes.
Okay, if you go on to the business section of it. This is a motion to approve an Illinois certified police officer for a sign-in, sign-on bonus incrementally given out, one thousand upon hire, one thousand at six months, one thousand after the first year, and then finally two thousand being paid out at the end of the second year. I would like to hold this until next meeting because it didn't reflect our conversation in the minutes. We came back out of closed and there was nothing in the minutes that said we had this discussion for a head nod to go forward. And so I, I just wanna do it correctly so that the public gets the opportunity and everybody gets an opportunity to hear and say it. So, next week, we'll have it there for a motion and I just think that's the correct way to proceed. Okay? Anybody, everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right. Motion to approve a trial bus route for Clinton's MTA bus service. You have that motion?
So moved.
And discussion?
Yep, so where are we at with this? Anybody know?
So, last I knew, I had asked him if he wanted any of us present at their council meeting. He said they looked like they were going to approve, regardless whether we wanted to partake in it or not, we're gonna do the trial.
They're coming here either.
Either way, they're going to do the trial coming here. They were just looking for our support and looking to see if we had the interest in helping support that portion financially for a little bit of it.
What's it cost?
Ten to twelve thousand dollars.
For a quarter, for a quarter of a year, right?
Correct.
So it was like seven hundred per week roughly?
But no one knows there's stops or how many times or...
Well, it'll be one stop every thirty minutes.
Was that a...
That was somewhere...
To be determined.
To be determined based on, I mean, I, I think they wanted to go right off like Fifth and Thirteenth, but not knowing when that was starting and what the, what that role project is. I don't know that that's gonna be like, so.
Nick, I have a question. Is this, we have to get on it now or we can jump on the bandwagon, say October, we're gonna try a quarter? I, I'm just asking.
Their, their trial was going to be, and again, I'm not, I'm not speaking a hundred percent on what dates are, but I think they were gonna start the beginning, middle of August and they were gonna run it for three and a half months and then make a determination at that point whether it was a feasible thing to continue or not.
So why would we, I would think we wanna let them be the lead and do the trial and then we will jump on if we give a lot of interest.
And why pay for it if you don't have to?
Yeah, yeah.
And where, how are you gonna pay for it?
Yeah.
Says in here, August twenty-first to December first.
I just didn't know if that was for us as a trial, if we could jump on at any time, but there, this is, this is what they're gonna do, starting that date.
My interpretation is they're doing this bus route starting on that day regardless to see how, what issues they have with it.
There needs to be discussion.
Well, they guess they get money back if the people ride, right? So if we put the money out, they're getting our money and the people's money and they why not let them do it and see if it's feasible from their end, pays for itself, if they're gonna do it anyway.
Why do you think?
Why would you pay for it?
Well, we would anyway in the future have to pay a portion.
Right.
Not necessarily.
No.
If it does not pay for itself, that's why they're feeing.
It only turned a dollar, right? I think it's gonna pay for it.
Yeah, if it pays for itself, it's funded publicly over here.
Yeah.
How do they pay for it if you don't?
Separate, separate tax.
Yep. Which we don't have.
Correct. At the time, at this current time, we do not have.
How is that something we get?
That would be a question for the attorney if he would be an eligible participant to put it, whether it needs to be on a non-referendum moving forward, whether it'll just be...
It would have to be a referendum.
Yep.
I would, I would think so if you're willing to create a new tax of some kind.
It'd be like saying it with taxing district for your parks.
Well, let's, so how do we get, they're gonna do it regardless. It's the way it sounds. So then at that point, I would say somebody just needs to track with them the writers in which are coming this way and going. They're gonna do that anyway, 'cause they're, if they're not getting anything, they're not gonna come over here.
Correct.
So they're basically gonna just...
It's just that, it's either feasible for them or it's not feasible.
Right, right, so.
The feasibility for us ultimately from, in conversations, does go back to the point of having a more fixed, long-term bus route over here. And that's a question, you know, considerably in the future, a council's gonna need to make a decision, how you're going to achieve that goal, if that's something you decide to do.
Yeah. Is this gonna be advertised, promoted in any way?
I would, yeah, in, in talking to him is, yeah, we wanted, we, even I included, wanted to make sure we tried to get it out on different social media platforms and the newspaper, things like that, but we didn't wanna put it out until everyone was on board with doing such a thing because, you know, what do you get? Current phone callers.
When were they gonna start?
August twenty-first.
Yeah, it says twenty-first through December first.
I'm for doing the trial. I don't know if we have to put the money first.
Well, we don't even have, do we even have any say in the trial?
I wish he was here today to answer that question.
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna do it one way or the other, and I don't know if anybody would be...
We're not opposed to it.
No.
Well, my understanding when he did his presentation was the trial was going to cost us money. Not that they were going to do it for nothing. So, my understanding was we were voting on paying our twenty-five percent for them to do this trial.
That's what I understand.
From his presentation.
So I say we just table this whole thing and go, someone lets us know what's going on.
Okay. Table to next month and we'll try to have him here.
Just to know for sure, yeah. Are we paying twenty-five percent or do we not have to?
Well, and we should have a little bit more exact numbers between, instead of ten thousand to twelve thousand. Maybe he knows that by now, so.
And you wanna know where it's, you wanna know where it's coming from. You gotta have that.
Well, he did, he did explain all that.
No, our, our portion.
Oh, we have to know. Okay, gotcha. All right. We go on to motion to approve ordinance number one-seven-two-two, Dole and Development Agreement, proofable ordinance and the development agreement, all in one motion.
So moved.
And second?
Or...
And we all say, no. Any discussion?
Just to add that there has been a correction to the one that was in your packet.
I gave you.
Correct to each heading on the ordinance.
So where are we at with all this, with Dole?
Done.
We got our money?
No, the closing is that part of it. I don't know if I will know that once he gets in touch with her. Fulton Industrial LLC is Dole, just so you know that, as you read the contract.
And then the attorney set a closing date. Once the closing date is set, he has to give us his money within forty-five days per our contract to him.
And it goes to the bank right away to pay off the note, which
Right.
there will be access, probably three fifty roughly left. I'd, I'd see what we all want.
So when, so we have that date?
Is there a closing date?
He has not indicated any closing date. They are being too close.
I did get a call from Dan this morning and they're ready to go. He just didn't realize it had to be, the TIF agreement had to be approved by us, but it's just kind of like, you know, this is how we have to do it to go forward because in his agreement, he wouldn't, until we agreed to the TIF, then he goes to the closing, correct? And then between the...
Now, it's my understanding is that he was holding on, signing everything into the TIF agreement that then...
So we have to say amen. And he's hoping to have it, as he told me, up and running, hopefully by the first of the year.
Good.
So...
Good.
So, there's a motion, a second. Is there any more questions or can we take it to a vote? Let's vote. Roll call please.
Alder Person Boonstra?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mast? Van Kampen?
Yes.
Bergerath?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Brondike?
Yes.
And because that was sale of property, that's what we were going on, it had to be two-thirds and of course we made that, so I didn't want to jinx it at first, so. Good. We're gonna go forward. Now we go to the committee of the whole discussion. Discussion item is a code officer and Mayor Wendy's going to assign the safety committee. I asked if that was okay for the obligation to find the necessary steps we need to take in our city, whether that to be qualified, whether that be part-time, full-time, what it is. So we're just gonna start the process as far as going ahead unless this council says no.
This is for code enforcement officer?
Yes. Yes.
Just including inspections and...
And you're going to find out all those things for us. So you don't...
There's all kinds of things they need to know.
Okay, yes. Yes, there is.
I don't know, is this a requirement by the state or is this something?
No, this is just something that we have tried to come up with to control the slum landlords. And this is the only thing that we've been able to come up with. You can't...
And currently...
Do we have?
We have nothing landlords? Please?
Oh, say what?
Who's, who's doing the...
We are doing the bulk, the police department is doing the enforcement and inspections on the bulk of the general city ordinances. Putting trash, trash cans, cars, peats, et cetera, et cetera. We do not have anything for rental inspections. We do not have anything that addresses certain dilapidated properties based on certain criteria. A lot of that falls back into the health department. The health department feels like cities municipality, municipalities issue a health department's problem. There's a lot of back and forth on who holds jurisdiction over those things, so. There's a lot. It's, it's a big pill to swallow, but there's a lot of information. It's nothing that's gonna happen immediately. It's, it's just becomes a generalized fact-finding mission to get all the information. Everybody's on back.
Gary Camerano through the Economic Development Committee said we should at least be accepting the smallest, what is that, Nick? The smallest code that a city can have. Right now we have none. So is it the Illinois?
Oh, there's the International Property Maintenance and Building Codes.
Yes.
There's the, there's just a lot. There, the, once you go down that road, it is, you open up Pandora's box.
Because you look at another local town that's going through some things right now. You open up a lot of litigation, a missed part of an inspection, and that's on you.
Okay.
So, you know, as a qualified person...
Well, that's what we would like you guys to figure out, see if it's worth our time or effort. But also, who's responsible? If we don't have a code, like to know that.
Would this be a full-time or a part-time position?
Part-time.
Part-time?
Oh, yeah. But that too is what they can look at. I think Nick suggested going over to Rock Falls. They have it in place so they can tell us exactly what it goes, what...
Is there a full-time or part-time?
Rock Falls has two full-time, one full-time building inspector, one full-time code enforcement officer. Rock Sterling has two full-time code enforcement officers, a electric, a full-time electrical inspector, a full-time building inspection and then another full-time building inspection person. Profits Town does do the International Property Maintenance and Building Codes, but the Public Works Department handles all of that with assistance from the police department if it requires the police department's assistance, and those are the only ones in the county, I believe. Morrison had looked at it at one point. I don't know if they are on the International Property Maintenance and Building Codes.
But that's the only way, if you're, if I'm remembering what you said, that we have any jurisdiction to go into people's, like, if they have seven cars in their yards. Now you...
It gives us a little bit more teeth depending on the ordinance, but it doesn't give us the permission to still enter the property and remove those things without a court injunction. It's just a more, by adopting the International Property Maintenance and Building Codes, it gives the municipality a little more bite, have you? But you still have to go through a municipal hearing. You still have to have the right judge sign off to go and remove those things from said property, so it just, it's still not a convenient snap-your-finger process to fix these issues. You still have to get the proper injunction from the court to be able to accomplish this.
Do you recommend it?
The Property Maintenance Building Code? I recommend it in certain aspects. In other aspects, it becomes a lot for my agency to chew on by itself when you add the other things that we have going on in, in our community. Do I think that we could facilitate having, you know, if we could facilitate rental inspections, I think that would be extremely beneficial. But doing rental inspections is part of adopting the International Property Maintenance and Building Codes. But once you adopt that code, there's a lot of other ones that go with it. So if you're going to do one, you don't have to adopt them all. Rock Falls doesn't have them all adopted. Sterling doesn't have them all adopted, nor would we have to adopt all of them. They get even so far into gas mugs. I mean, there's, there's, it's, again, when I say it's Pandora's box, you really are opening up that box, but how far down that rabbit hole do we wanna go? So.
Try getting my hands on the International Building Code book about that thing. I couldn't have had a good time for the meeting, but it's...
It's significant, yes. And I think it would be helpful though if you guys, it's you and Keith, could go over and talk to the Rock Falls to see, is that advantageous to us to have or isn't it? Even with Phil and I building, no one, no one comes to your house. I think that's a safe thing to have. We had the plumber union because they go by the building codes that are submitted. And so they are union-driven, so they come and Matt Peterson had to be up to their specs, but that's the only one. That's scary to me to have people building homes and it's not electrical up to code, it's not this up to code. And the landlords that don't keep up with their tenants, so. To me, we own two rentals to, to charge seventy-five dollars for an inspection once a year. I think if you keep doing that, then they come back and then they say, okay, you didn't get that fixed, it's a hundred and fifty now. I think it almost could pay for itself, but that's something you guys need to check on. There is a lot.
Well, I am home, sick room, but I didn't get a hold of the people because my son has rental property and he has to pay, it was a hundred and fifteen dollars for an inspection and then buy annual registration of the rental unit and he pays a hundred and twenty-eight dollars for that. And then they gave a whole list of what they check for. That's rental property. Now, you get into all the other stuff, I don't know, but that's what he, and he has to pay that every year. So, and they're, they're inspected and you got so many days. They give you enough time to get it fixed, but...
Poor Byron tried.
Poor Byron tried to do the old rental inspection every year and within six months it went to the wayside, 'cause for a part-time guy to try and get into every single rental place in Fulton, there's just not enough time, you know, at a part-time, and then even after a year, they just said, this isn't even worth it, 'cause people are gonna say they're gonna fix it and then you forget to go back and look at it and now nothing ever got touched and the liability still falls back on the city now. And, I mean, you look at Davenport right now, what they're dealing with with the building that collapsed. They have building inspectors that miss things and it could come back on city Davenport, 'cause they missed it, so. I mean, do, do we really wanna put ourselves in that position?
Have you gotta get certain data lead before you can even make entry on the property? Have you gotta coordinate that?
And they don't technically have to let you in the property.
Right.
Your minimum seventy to eighty thousand dollars would a person cost here? That is, they'll have a family to see.
Well, we can take it off the table. I...
I still think we should pursue it. I think it's a need for our community and I, you know, it... Nick's been saying for a while he needs another officer. That's gonna take some weight off the officers to think of it as kind of a double in there as far as taking some of the work off of them. They're not doing ordinance checks. And then, you know, I'm not saying, yes, we need to do it, you know, right now, but I think we still should investigate from the cause of it further.
I think there's lots of solutions, 'cause it could be a part-time retired certified person that came in here ten hours a week. I mean, Fulton's not that big.
Well, and, you know, they don't forget that we have to hold them accountable. They're being paid to do a job. They need to make sure they're doing it. Like, that's, that's just not a good excuse.
That's a good excuse to me, Eric, that they just, that it just went by the wayside. Well, it was...
Well, it's just, see, he had a full-time job and for him to try and schedule stuff around other people's schedules, it just didn't work. So he just said, this isn't worth my time to try and schedule everything, but I can't make it at nine o'clock in the morning when I work...
Because you're putting that workload on a full-time person already.
And, you know, to find somebody that knows the building codes inside now already, on top of their full-time job, that, you know...
Actually, I wanna think, I believe the fire chief in the eight district has that capability, the ability to do inspections. So we'll have to do some digging. I know commercially they can't, you know, they can walk into, you know, any, but residential, I'm not sure.
It'd be nice to find the community, like a peer community of our size and see somebody that has a successful program within, how they're running it. Versus, Rock Falls or Sterling, they're so much larger, that's a lot that's comparable.
But even just the fees, you know, that could be collected, like you said, maybe it would pay for that part-time salary.
Your committee can look into it.
Yeah, look into it. But then again, we get to have a bunch of abandoned crap buildings like Clinton, because people can't afford to fix their stuff up.
That's exactly right. There's a, there's a happy medium, Jeff. I think, you know, Clinton is way...
Right.
People won't fix it up because the codes are so tight over there and there's so many. And you're right, there is a happy medium. Anyway, so, you guys willing to take that on? Give it to you. Second discussion item is Alder Person Van Kampen, who came to me with it, but I guess it's Keith's idea. Would like to discuss shirts for the council members and the mayor to wear at events to be recognized, so take it away.
We did this once before, back in the early two thousands when I was on the council. They all had a shirt, like a three-button golf shirt, so if you're out at different events and stuff like that, people would be wearing. It was just an idea.
We deal with Centas, he does. He can get an ideal price.
Well, and there's, there's somebody, a business in our downtown that does it too, so I'd like to support our business as far as doing that, especially because there's so few and... Okay. Okay. I just told Keith I don't want a T-shirt. I want a nice little shirt with a collar or something. So anyway, we'll let you guys look into that as well and we'll, we'll come back to it next, next meeting. Committee reports, there's lots of them in our packet. Finance is first up. Anybody have any questions? And that would have been Jeff and Barb. Barb's not here. Do you have any questions for Jeff? Seemed like it went smooth.
It did. In a nutshell, the museum supports itself, which is good. It doesn't cost the taxpayers any.
I was really glad to see that. I was glad to see the explanation and as we said, we're gonna bring it back to the table and Barb says she's got lots to say, so. And it, and it was good for me because I wasn't realizing that it's totally self-sustaining and not taking taxpayer dollars whatsoever. And it's got that bulk that it sits and it pulls the interest off of, so that was good for me to know, but we'll talk about that next time. Jeff, you have anything else to add?
Nope.
I did have a question just, and I don't know if you can answer it, 'cause it's more of a Mark and House question, but I just wondered where that, what the twelve thousand from FACE was that they received back in May.
So there's a quarter million dollar that was invested in FACE, correct? Basically a dividend from that, and that's what they're operating off of.
They give them twelve thousand dollars a year. They hold that honey, Jackie.
Okay, so then what's the balance in the account? I need a...
That's yours, Dan?
I guess. I thought, we didn't put them, I guess they're not in there. I will email that to you. I wanna say three...
Well, they're, they're in there, three hundred and forty-three thousand.
Yeah, three, two.
So that's what is in the account and then they just pull over twelve thousand per year.
So definitely, there's a line item also in your treasure report and there's twenty-nine thousand in there. That's money that they've saved from the dividends.
Yeah. They, they're giving the twelve thousand, but their balance is twenty-nine because they didn't spend it all, so they just keep it flowing as well. So that was, that was good for me because I didn't realize that.
And it's good we're honoring, or they're honoring the Mark's wishes. They've equated the million plus dollars to the city that was divided equally four ways and went to...
Well, and that Historical Society gets used. I mean, I have had people come into this shop and where is it? Because they do that genealogy. That's, that's really...
Comes out of the three forty, three hundred and forty-three thousand. It's just the twelve is all they're getting, but in that line item, it's, I don't have a treasure report, I believe it's seventy-nine.
Oh, the three forty-three is what's left is seventy-nine?
No.
It's line item.
No line item.
Oh, okay.
Well, Barb will be here to explain it next time, so.
Yeah, they've done well. We're also looking into the Millers and the friends possibly combining their money, because Miller's always short on money. They're actually, that's what they're doing. They're getting their money from that facility.
Right now, we're trying to find out how much the Cultural Center has. We, they haven't reported to us for a while. So those are city entities, the Cultural Center and the Windmill. We own them. So they need to send us a balance sheet and so Dan's trying to get everything kind of buttoned up before a new person comes on, so we have all of those numbers.
Yeah, I think when we, that, that should be something that we're getting with the Mark and House is all the attractions that we own.
Yeah.
Well, they all, all their agreements are usually quarterly, so you'll get them, and they're, they're all in there. We're just not getting there. We'll make sure you get it.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we go on to personnel. We, our committee started, actually, I just, Nick has been very helpful in getting it on LinkedIn. Tammy helped get it on Indeed. We have had the city administrators position posted since last Friday. We've received about thirty so far, rejected, rejected ten and... Ten.
No, I think I rejected twenty and they have ten good ones. Eleven, I just gave you.
Oh, the opposite of what I said. Okay. And so, but it's a daily, daily thing that we kind of have to go through and make sure that we're up to date on because Indeed times you. Once they accept it, you have seventy-two hours whether to answer or you're charged twenty-five dollars. So it's like, okay. And so Terry, I'm asking, what are you doing next week? I'm going to be on vacation. And Sue, between the two of you, someone needs to come in and look at it with Nick.
Eric, on that committee.
I've been planning this. We got to be gone Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Okay.
My granddaughter is getting married.
Oh, I know. It's, it would be like Sunday or four o'clock. Oh, you could do it early?
Three-thirty in the morning.
I will be.
You're gonna be done? You're gonna be here?
Yeah, I got that.
Terry's gonna be here. It'll be me. I just think there needs to be someone from that personnel committee in there and checking. But, you know, we've gotten some that, you know, they were parked there. No, we're not gonna do that, but the ones with the education, I think we're getting a higher educated group from the LinkedIn, but some of them are very good. The next step will be, what we're doing is sending out, yes, we might be interested in you. Are you, will you fill out the application? Nick said that's going to be the deciding point because if they don't want to fill out that fifteen-page application, then we know they're, they're not interested. So that's gonna take it down a few. And so I think that we've kind of got that process. Tori's gonna put it in the Clinton Herald and the Quad City Times on Sundays on the Quad City paper, on Saturdays in the Clinton Herald, and the same for the Gazette, for the Stock Valley. And so we'll just run that, not, you know, a couple weeks. That one, you, you really get that Indeed and the LinkedIn are where we need to be. So it's coming through for us.
Are any local, can I ask? Or would they all be?
Nope. Nope. Some, some are local, some are Quad Cities, some are, some are, some said, willing to relocate. You know, that's where we said, maybe you're thinking with their education background that we're not going to be able to afford them, but maybe they're trying to get out of a big city where it costs, you know, an arm and a leg to live. And so there's all sorts of possibilities. So starting, for just being out there Friday, it's kind of starting out very well, so.
Yeah.
We go on to economic development. Jackie and Jeff, then, and you guys have any questions? I have to report right after I gave you the number to Loyal's Pizzeria. He is coming. He's going to Renee. Is Renee off all this week?
No, she won't be there.
Oh, she'll be in tomorrow. Okay. And he's going to come and apply for his liquor license and going to come and explain to the council. But still planning on coming, so.
Did he give you a date?
No, no. He's still waiting on loan too. He's got a couple different areas, but.
Loyal's Pizzeria, he'll be taking over the old Springer's?
It's, and his background is Angelo's. And so they will have the pizza, the pastas, the Italian. And, yeah, I'll, I'll be looking forward to that, so. He just said, I'm sorry it's taking so long. I got your business, you know? We want you here. And so that's what we told, I told Jeff and Jackie. Just ask them if there's anything we can do for them. That's about all we can do. So go on to parks and rec.
Um, we met on Wednesday and there was quite a bit of discussion. And we had asked for another restroom down there and they decided, Eric, that to extend one that's already there because of the sewer that's already there and adding two to four, less costly, right?
Less costly. And as we, we actually invited a few people from the community that use the fields on a daily basis, basically from March through July, high school, baseball, softball, rec league, all of that. And we're sitting there thinking, if people on a daily basis are sitting down here and using this concession stand in these bathrooms, why would we build something brand-new way, way far out? So maybe we invest in, I think Eric kind of liked the idea too because it was, he's like, yeah, there's already plumbing and there's already electrical and we can make this really nice. And then people at the events can just walk along the side of the ball field to use that. And it seemed a little bit more of a feasible project than all new. And the money would just go much further. That was us, so.
Anything else, Sue? Nope. It's all in your packet. We go on to public safety. You guys do need to. Marina, I don't think.
Water's low.
Water's low. Tourism is on your page thirty-two. Jackie, you wanna?
Um, I attended my second tourism meeting now. Um, it's a pretty well-oiled machine. They, they need every month. They have the representative from each attraction in town. Leslie puts together a agenda and we just kind of work through the things that are listed here as far as events coming up in August, future events, or events that are coming up, I guess, July and August. And, um, yeah, the most, or the next thing, I guess, big thing will be the citywide garage sales. So Leslie has started like an event on Facebook, so sharing that. If any of you have social media, please share it. Um, I was gonna ask Nick if you could do that on the, is that something the police department page could do? Or not? Is that kind of?
Poor part.
Okay.
The other thing I have is, did we change the signs yet?
What do you mean?
There's lettering, there's lettering on our signs that usually, I guess, was supposed to be taken care of by the tourism person, which is Leslie. And Carrie Kenny called me and said, you know, if you have the letters, I can do it. I don't think Carrie Kenny should be changing the letters on our boards, you know?
From what I gathered, they were.
See, I don't think we have August first up there at all.
Yes, June something.
Right. I mean, and I, all the letters.
You mean, I thought you meant the signs that we hand out for people to put in their yards.
No, 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 no. There's a sign out on the bike trail. There's a sign that's, when you come off of the thirty bridge, did you?
Has Leslie ever done it before?
Yes, she's done it.
Okay. I'll email her.
Perfect. Because all the letters are in the tourism office in front of mine, so. But I just don't think Carrie Kenny should be doing it.
I think that's a Leslie thing.
Yeah. So we go on to zoning. I don't think we have anything to announce there. We go on to my report. I'm gonna make it quick. Went to DC, had wonderful, wonderful experience. It was surreal to be in the Capitol where they had all of those people at. And we had a private tour given to us by Eric Sorensen. Um, we talked to Dick Durbin, Tammy Duckworth, and Eric Sorensen. Every single one of them gave me a head nod with our one point two. And there's a process, but, you know, I, at least to me, it was wonderful because we made the contacts. So I'm working with each one of those people, but they're, they're, you know, they have all these interns. They're gonna be working with me. One of them took it and said, Durbin's office took, took the plan and said, the, Dick Durbin's the head of the appropriations that take place in January. She said, this is just exactly what we're looking for because we have infrastructure, water, and lighting. She says, I don't see any problem with this, but I've heard that story before, so I'm gonna keep on them and keep in touch with them. And it, it was just a great trip. And Illinois thirty was presented, not quite as positively because I was asking for one point two million. They're asking for five hundred and fifty million. But it, it was received well and I am speaking with Win, Senator Win Stolen over at MIT tomorrow to also present. They want to hear it. So Stock Valley just called me, wants to have an interview to keep it out there because that Illinois Route Thirty has to be started or at least stamped approval by twenty-seven, or they have to start the study all over. The study costs the state of Illinois seven point five million dollars. So let's not waste it. Let's keep going. So all in all, it was a very, very good trip and, you know, well, well worth you going out there and meeting them face-to-face. So got lots of little cards that I'm going to keep. So anybody for the aldermen? Nope. We go on to city administrators.
Just a couple things. Bartos, we've heard nothing, Matt, so for those of you who can't handle, nothing. It's in his court and it's Dave who we're going on. Callius didn't bring a permit out. They took a permit. That's a good thing for him. So hopefully we'll see that. They got two years now available. So wait and see what happens there. I'll do a presentation again. Some of you saw it, I think Jackie, Mayor Wendy, on the downtown. We're, we're sitting good for that next time. We were, we were late in April. We knew that, but you're gonna be a great champion next year. If you get that one, two put on top of it.
Can go for phase.
A portion of it, whatever you want to do.
Whatever. It can go for phase two. It can go.
Yeah, don't, yeah, that'd be great. Don't stop planning. Don't stop planning.
Right.
I found a tabletop in Debut and it's so subtle. It's right by the, the grass hut thing.
By the bench.
Is that, what's that grass?
I don't know what that actually is.
It's right there.
That grass hut is the, is the.
Well, that's bench hill, dude.
Well, I tried, no, I tried it.
It's the taper office.
Yeah.
Oh.
Regardless, it's right there, the tabletop, and it's really well done. Their downtown is well done, so.
It is. Except I don't like all their bump outs. I'm like, Eric, I don't like that.
Anyway, it's a good place to look at it. Don't stop planning. It, it will happen.
Right, good.
Nautical compass would be cool in the middle there too.
Yes. Yep. Okay, we go on to public. Any questions, Eric? How's the sidewalks coming? I would like to know that.
Slow.
I can tell that.
Yeah. It's not as easy of a process when they're trying to get fiber internet run through town right now.
Okay.
Because that's taken, they call in somebody locates at one time. It takes two of my guys away to locate so we can stay up with them. So then that takes guys that could be doing other things. So I guess you have fast internet or nice sidewalk.
Right. And when is the anticipation of that being completed? The fiber?
Uh, so fiber right now, from what they've said, they want, they want to be completely done in Fulton by December. And obviously, you've probably all seen throughout town. This is phase one. Phase two will be the north end. Phase three will be over by the schools and then five and six is something that town will kind of incorporate everything there. No, they're, they're trucking right along.
They've had great weather.
Nine thousand footer pipe today in that too.
Really? Oh, really?
It's exciting.
It is exciting. Another option.
Yes.
I don't have any of those. I know Historical Society report that also was in your packet and Barb will explain it next time. So without any further ado, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Yeah.
Second.
And roll call, please. Well, I guess we can all say.
Aye.
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 We just always keep it on there just in case. Oh, just in case it is like today.